Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the afternoon study session for April the 4th of the Mesa City Council. Our entire council is present for this meeting. The first item on our agenda is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting, so please refer to that agenda. I know we went over it on Thursday. Currently, there's one item off the consent, and it's the zoning case that we've talked about at a long bow. But, council, is there anything else on tonight's agenda that you'd like some additional information on? Mr. Brady, anything that staff would like to share with us about anything on the agenda tonight?
Mayor, I think we covered those items on Thursday, so I don't think there's anything additional we need to discuss.
Right. I agree. Unless council has any questions, then moving on then. Item 2A on our agenda is a presentation to provide direction on the Transportation Department budget. So we're just going to invite RJ up first rather than making him get up 12 times like we did last Thursday. I can't guarantee we won't make you come up for everybody else's presentation too.
That's all right. That's why we're here. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. RJ Zeder with the Transportation Department. With me, to my left, is Eric Goderian, Deputy Director for Traffic Engineering, and Orlando Otero, our Deputy Director for Field Operations. If we have questions that we need to dig in on, they are here to help out. So, yes, I feel like we were just talking about our budget, but that's all right. So we'll jump right in. Transportation's purpose is simply to plan, design, and operate a safe and efficient multimodal transportation system. Our goals are to have a transportation network that can be safely and efficiently navigated, and that our assets are managed and well-maintained. Please feel the interrupt with questions as they make them up. Talking about just some of our performance measures that we use, we do use data to help drive our decision-making. So for field operation, again, this is Mr. Otero's area. We've got a couple, what we call the green side, one on red, which we'll actually address in terms of some of the budget enhancements that we're seeking for the next fiscal year. Our street condition overall is steady. We have a pavement condition index, PCI. It's a 0 to 100 ranking of our streets. At a combination of Orlando's staff and consultants, we periodically go out and assess our entire 3,600 lane miles of street inventory to determine the condition that it's in. Just to give you a little perspective, 100 is a brand-new street. Anything less than 40 is in need of significant rehab or reconstruction, and in-between is where we do our maintenance and our overlays. Our street sweeping cycle, simply because we've added about 10% to our street inventory in the last 10 years, we're just a little off-track on that, but we feel that with the addition of another street sweeper, that we'll be able to get back on our four-week cycle of getting to each neighborhood street. One of the questions that came up when we were talking briefly last Thursday is the balance between in-house staff and contracted work that we do. You'll see that a little bit when we get into some of our ASK. But, street sweeping is one of those areas where we use in-house staff to sweep our local streets and contractors to do our collectors and our arterial streets. So we try to strike that balance that we're not overstaffing. We do contract quite a bit of work in our department. Streetlight repairs is really a success story. Then, in addition to keeping within our five-day measure for repairs of streetlights that are out, the same staff are also doing the upgrades of our existing streetlight systems to LED, and they are on track with that measure as well. So they're a busy group. Within Mr. Goderian's area, and again, we'll talk about this a little bit in terms of how many traffic signals we've added since the last time we've added additional staff in that area, we're just slightly off of our measures for signal trouble call. This is responding within an hour of a streetlight, or, excuse me, a traffic signal having some form of malfunction. Part of the reason for this number is we actually had a bit of a monsoon this past year, and we would sometimes have more than one signalized intersection out at one time. And then the bottom measure is one for regular system maintenance.
RJ, Mr. Thompson has a question for you.
Yes, sorry.
Sorry, RJ. I know that last week or so, we were talking about how many lane miles we have in Mesa. Did you ever get that number?
We have about 3,600 lane miles, and I was going to talk about it when we get to our paving number, but just as a point of reference, on average, it varies from year to year. We're currently repaving about 44 lane miles per year. I can jump down. You'll see at the top of this list, you'll see that we're adding or proposing to add 10 million to our overlay program. This is all done through contractors. Currently, we work with Beth Hunning's staff on, in some cases, using job order contracts. We're also bidding some projects to validate our pricing on the JOC side to make sure we're getting the best price. This is all done with contractors. So by going from our current $10 million overlay budget to 20 million because of cost increases we've recently seen, we're not going to see double, you know, the amount of lane miles added, but I would say roughly, we should be able to add about another two-thirds to what we do every year. So that would take us, say, from 44, 45 lane miles a year to about 75. And that's a good place to be because we talk about a 40-year life, you know, of a street. So by doubling this number, that'll get us very close to being able to stay on track with a 40-year lifecycle for our streets.
Thank you.
Jumping back, just a quick reminder, you all know this, but Transportation Department has two major revenue sources and a few smaller ones, but our major sources of revenue are highway user revenue funds and the three-tenths-of-one-cent local street sales tax. And the good news is, and we didn't, none of us, I think, knew this going into the pandemic, our revenues are very strong. And it's because we've had strong revenues that we're able to add to our base level of funding. So again, this is the list of positions plus the $10 million doubling our current street overlay budget. The, as you see, the operating costs are, for the additional staff, are under a million, and this is really spread throughout the department. I won't read all of this to you, but I mentioned a little bit ago, adding another traffic signal technician. You know, we've gone from 302 to 489 signalized intersections since we last added a signal tech, and then across the field ops program, we've added about 10% to our street inventory. So we'd like a couple of workers within our pavement preservation work group. The debris pickup program that we started a couple of years ago, we kind of took a guess on how much staff was going to need to make that program successful. So we originally started with two workers, a rear loader, solid waste truck, and a front-end loader, and we'd like to add another staff member here just because of the amount of debris that we're finding is out there. Two big programs, one is proactive, which is getting into the alleys, and we're finding that once per year, we can get through every alley in the city. And it's a very popular program with the folks that back up to those alleys. Sometimes it might be some of the folks that live there that are contributing to the work that we have to do there, but it, keeping those alleys open and, you know, removing the debris is very helpful. In addition, we work very closely with our police department and code enforcement on encampments, you know, where there's a public health issue. I've been out to some of them, and it's something to see. So it's a great program, and we're proud that we can work with PD and code compliance on that. Again, we mentioned the street sweeper, just in terms of adding street miles.
RJ, go quickly.
Yeah.
So currently today, the debris pickup program, what does that current staffing look like today?
It's currently two people, so this will take it to three. However, Orlando can tell you that when we have large cleanups, especially homeless camps, it takes a lot more than three people. We will pull people from other crews as needed to go out and do some of those because they can be week-long events, you know, by themselves.
So I think what we're saying is our pilot program has seemed to be very effective.
It's extremely effective.
So we're going to continue, we're proposing that more staff here. We'll continue to evaluate our ability to get around the city and do these pickups. Remember, it's still the Transportation Department, so we do have to have somewhat of a linkage back to Transportation when we do this, but we've been very pleased. I know code compliance talks about this program too and how it helps them. So it's been a success, and we appreciate everybody's work on this.
As you can see, we've picked up 460 tons in the last almost two years since we started the program. That just gives you a real sense of the scale of the amount of material that we're removing. To Mr. Brady's point, the focus of the program is the public right-of-way, and that's how we link the use of the transportation dollars to that. But we also, and a lot of the work we do with PD is in right-of-way. It's just tucked away sometimes in some strange places.
Ms. Phil, right.
So none of this is like the debris pickup after special events or anything?
No.
None of this has anything to do with that?
No.
That's all in parks and rick?
Yes.
You know, you were talking about special events, we're impacting our city. Right, but so debris pickup isn't that. This is just right-of-way.
No, this is day-to-day, cleaning alleys and working where we have significant issues, where there's illegal dumping.
And is this also tied in, like, on the Mesa Now app, when you can report things? Is that, that would go to this too? Like, could someone say, "I need my, the alley's really bad behind my house"?
There's a way on the app. I'll have to check that specifically. There's a way to make general referrals. We do use the app for graffiti is a big one.
Yes.
Where it geolocates, you take that picture, it sends it to us.
Right.
I'll verify that. I believe the answer, council member, is yes.
Okay.
To that question. Do you know, Orlando?
We do, given.
Like, if it's just what you're seeing, or if it's also complaints from people?
We certainly will respond to complaints, and that's actually a different person. Number five is, right now, we have one person we call Hazard Response, and that is a person who literally covers the entire city, and that's where there could be a mattress dumped on a sidewalk or in a street blocking something, and we're just finding with literally one person to cover the entire city, it's hard, because we also use that person to proactively, when they're not picking up things based on complaints, they're knocking down weeds. So we'd like to add a second person and split the city in half for that program. So it's kind of a mix.
Yeah. RJ, thank you, Mr. Brady, for doing this program. This has been very beneficial to our neighborhoods and our alleys. As you know, I've utilized it numerous times in our district, and thank you for the crews and staff. It's a tough job. It's, you know, there's not a lot of cream on top of this, you know, fluff, and so to speak, because this is kind of down and dirty stuff, so. And, you know, there's contamination issues and, you know, just responding to our needs and, you know, my colleagues, I'm sure we can all express the same support. So I appreciate that and extend that to the crews because that means a lot, and hope that it continues. And if you need another crew, let's add another crew. Okay, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, and we, and every year, we look at the budget, see what our capacity is. This year, we just, we decided to go really big on street maintenance because we felt the budget could support it now, and frankly, I don't, I think I got here right after this was passed, but it certainly, the selling point was, we're going to be able to do more maintenance of the streets. So we're trying to go big on that. And then, of course, protecting or cleaning up the right-of-way, managing our right-of-way falls right underneath that. So the graffiti, debris pickup, all that kind of comes after that. So, yeah, we'll continue to monitor that.
There, and councilor, to your point, I've been out with our debris crew. It's tough work. They're a proud crew, though, and I may have shared with you, and I can, I can show you some before-and-after photos, you know, of the work that they do, and they're really, it's really a good crew, and we're happy we can provide that service.
One last question. Do you have the capacity, I mean, does, do you need another crew to meet the needs within your department and the city?
I, I.
I'm just asking overall.
Sure. When you look at the 10 positions that we're seeking across the department, three are in Traffic Engineering, seven are in Field Operations, we think for right now, that puts us in a good place. We're always evaluating, you know, so, for example, when a vacancy comes up somewhere in our department, we don't just automatically assume that we're going to refill that position. You know, one example is not directly related to field ops, but it will help them. We're doing so much planner view work right now. We took a vacant position for one area of our department, are going to create another engineer position to help with planner views just because of the amount of activity that we have. We took an office supervisor position, and we created a safety person, given the type of work that our folks do. So these are decisions that we make, you know, as opportunities present themselves, but adding these 10 positions, I think, puts us in a good spot.
And I think, to RJ's point, when we look at a program, of course, for transportation, he has to look across the whole spectrum of services he provides, right? So we want to be careful that if we just focus on debris, then we, you know, we have needs over in graffiti, or we have needs in median landscaping, or barricading is one of my favorite ones. So we're trying to balance that need across the entire spectrum of services.
Well, thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you. And we're finding that we have a very good collaboration across Traffic Engineering and Field Ops, and we're actually doing some in-house projects that we hadn't been able to do in the past. So continuing, adding a second graffiti abatement employee. Our measure today is 24 business hours from when we receive a complaint about graffiti to have that abated. You'll find that our dedicated employee that we have currently, actually 70% of the work that he does is not complaint-generated, it's proactive. He knows where graffiti is just by his work. We actually have a heat map, and it wouldn't surprise you if you looked at the heat map to see where the graffiti incidents are. But by adding a second employee, because we're actually starting to see a little bit more graffiti out east, and having the city split, it will help us, you know, maintain that 24-hour response measure.
Mr. Luna.
Thank you for that program. I think it's wonderful, and people can still use the app for that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and you continue to publicize it, so that people know that you have apps available.
The nice thing about the app is, and I've used it myself just to make sure it works, is to make sure that the backend works, you know, and you get the notification, "We received your, you know, your concern." And then when our staff, it's, don't ask me how they do it, but we have our work order system, and it will generate an email to say we've completed the response. So that's important to us, and we get a lot of positive feedback on that. In Eric's area, we are proposing to add two traffic barricading coordinators. As you all know, there was so much activity going on in the city, and not just city projects. We review traffic control plans for private development. There is a great deal of fiber being put in the ground by private contractors, and all these projects come with barricades in the streets. So that's something we want to pay close attention to and stay on top of, so we're asking for two more barricade coordinators. And lastly, is adding another contract specialist within our landscape group. We're in the process, making backup. We have an annual program where we upgrade existing landscaping. Many times, the irrigation systems are old and have failed, and it doesn't do any good to put a half million dollars a year or more in the landscape upgrades unless we're also upgrading the irrigation systems that feed that. So, and as part of the Climate Action Plan, we're working to get smart controllers across our landscape network. A challenge for us is that, because it's a very linear system, we don't see where there's leaks necessarily unless someone drives by one or someone calls us to tell us there's a leak. So by making the system smarter, we think we can be more efficient with water resources that are used to keep our system looking good. Big picture, budget. Our ASK for the next fiscal year is $53 million. Again, the largest parts of this are highway user revenue funds and the local street sales tax. The increase from '21, '22 to '22, '23 is driven by, of course, the 10 positions we're seeking, as well as there was an increase in the base budget of just over 5% to account for inflation. And this is separate from the capital or lifecycle program. So the $10 million that we mentioned earlier in the presentation is actually part of the city's capital program, so that's in addition to the numbers you see here. So with that.
It just shows up in a different fund. It doesn't show up here, so this, this doesn't reflect the $10 million.
Correct.
Okay. But it's, we just put it in the capital program, so.
But I'm happy to, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
I know we had this discussion, or we have this discussion every year about adding beacon signals into our system, and we're continuing, I'm continuing to get messages and emails for Eastmark Parkway and Palladium for the school crossing there. I guess another kid almost got hit the other day, so is there any way that we can put a beacon out there?
I think the answer is.
To stop the traffic?
I think the answer is yes. There's some moving parts out there. Council members, you may know, there's a library that's going to be constructed on Eastmark Parkway, and the Northern Charter School is moving their crosswalk, and so we're trying to make sure we put it in the right place.
Okay.
We appreciate, and we know that you're hearing from the folks that live out in Eastmark, especially that, you know, across Eastmark Parkway, so I think the answer to your question is yes. I think we'll probably be looking towards fall when we have a better idea where we can place that.
So that's as the basis school to the north or whatever is that? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So the, there is basis, and then there's Sequoia Pathfinder.
A little further up.
Yeah, and the Sequoia Pathfinder school is actually moving their school crosswalk to directly in front. We were out this spring, and there is a lot of activity out there. With all the moving parts, we need to go back out there this fall to see where the activity goes, and it is, it's high on our priority list. We just want to make sure we get it put in the right place.
Right. Awesome. And like you said, we've got to figure out what the library coming in too, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll have to study that, yeah.
And that's actually not included in this, it might be here.
Yes.
We get about a million dollars a year in photo safety dollars, and that, those funds are used to pay for projects like you're talking about. We use the photo safety dollars to pay for beacons, we use it to fill in sidewalk gaps, you know, where there's safer off to school, and so it's a good use.
What's the photo safety dollars? Do we know what the photo safety number is, Chris?
That goes to transportation or the?
For the, we use, have we set aside the?
Not all, but goes to transportation.
Yeah, so have we set aside to do these?
Safety.
How much?
1.2 million.
1.2 million, okay.
But that, that funding goes directly into safety projects like we're talking about.
Right. Because that was the, that was on the red light and cameras and things, so that's what we're using.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Council, other questions for RJ before we send him back to the audience so he can pop back when we have future presentations?
I'd just say thank you, RJ. I mean, I know that, you know, with District 6, there's a lot of needs, and it's not necessarily with existing, it's with new infrastructure, and you guys always come through every time I have, so thank you for all that you've done.
Mayor, councilors, thank you. We have an excellent staff. I'm blessed to work with a great group of people.
Amen. All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Next item on our agenda is to be, this is a presentation to provide direction on the Transit Services Department and budget. Jody, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll try to keep this concise because I understand we have some Jayhawk fans around the table that might want to watch.
I've heard the same thing, yeah.
Way to go, Jody.
I'm Jody Sorel, I'm the Transit Services Director. So we're going to review, I wasn't, I was out of town on Thursday, but I watched the study session, so hopefully I can answer some of the questions that were asked on Thursday in tonight's presentation. Our purpose is really, the elevator speech version is we provide transit options for our community, whether it's light rail bus or paratransit options. When we look at our performance measures, you're going to hear me say this a couple times tonight, and that COVID really wrecked havoc on transit. So when we're looking back to 2020, you can see the big drop-offs of ridership. Most of our, because of what we do, ridership is a big, is our primary performance metric. So you can see where in 2020, it definitely fell off. Light rail is coming back slowly but surely, inching back. The bus is taking a little bit longer, the bus. Fix route is also challenged because there is a driver shortage, so there's a number of missed trips that are happening out there, starting back in November, and they just have gotten progressively worse, so that's part of the reason why the fix route numbers are low. And the park and ride utilization, that's for the express buses running into Phoenix. There's some businesses that have not gone back full-time, and we're not sure how this is going to pan out in the future because we have situations where the express bus is, the three largest groups that ride the express bus are the city of Phoenix, county and state employees, and the state has given up 500,000 square feet in downtown Phoenix. So that will have a tremendous effect on the express bus ridership moving forward. And then my favorite to talk about are paratransit and ride choice service. So these are trending, these numbers are back in Jan, from January. We have just got the February numbers after this presentation had to be put in, and we always lag about 30 days after the end of the month from getting our numbers from Valley Metro. But you can see, both are coming back. We're trending in the right direction in that we're starting to provide more, starting in December, we started to provide more ride trip, ride choice trips per month than paratransit trips. And our paratransit trips cost us about $50 a trip, and our ride choice trips cost us about $27 a trip right now. So we're trending that in the right direction. I wanted to share with you just quickly, just briefly, last year in the budget, we asked for some enhancements to Route 45, which is Broadway Road, and Route 120, which is Mesa Drive. And you can see, even with the driver shortage, these routes are seeing growth, specifically, especially the Mesa Drive route, that's seen a significant, almost doubled its ridership. And just to share a little story on that, we get, I get lots of emails from people asking us to increase service in different places. And in 20, apparently in 2017, I exchanged emails with a resident along Mesa Drive who was asking for increased service on Mesa Drive. And I explained to him kind of the plan, the vision for trying to add that service, and on Christmas Eve Day, I got an email. He forwarded the email chain from 2017 back to me, thanking me for adding the service, adding enhancements onto Mesa Drive. So I wanted to share that with you, that the community does appreciate that. Looking at our budget enhancements for '22, '23, we do have the Fiesta Buzz, which will connect Mesa River View to the Fiesta District starting in October. We are doing a study for the Rio, what they're calling the Rio East Street Car Extension. So this will be partnering with the city of Tempe and Valley Metro to come up with a locally preferred alternative for that route, which will come to council. This is a three-year study that we've stretched the funding over those three years to draw that out. And this will, this phase of the study will have much more robust public involvement than the previous technical study did. We're also going to be updating our Transit Master Plan, and that will, this plan will include little layers of trying to find the most productive areas to put the service out. Not every part of Mesa is probably fit for a 40-foot bus, so we'll look at our baseline service that we operate today. If we do, what corridors are the most productive for a 40-foot bus for the fixed route expansion? What areas might be best for a neighborhood circulator? And then what areas might be best for microtransit options? So that we're maximizing our services and getting the most productivity out of them. Then we have the TOD grant that we talked to you about a couple weeks ago that will be going on simultaneously. And then we're asking for some money for some shade structures to continue to put bus shelters on locations where we have bus stops. Bus shelters are some kind of shade at our bus stops that are lacking that option. And then finally, the light blue option is not funded by the city, it's funded by our Prop 400 money that we're going to make some adjustments to Route 77 on baseline, which right now ends at Dobson. We're going to extend that to the park and ride at Country Club in Juanita there by the Home Depot, so that that's a more logical end of the line and to make connections for our riders.
Jody, can you go back to the shade structures?
Mm-hmm.
Just to remind us, because we've funded some of these over the last couple of years, kind of what the status is?
Right.
What are we looking for now?
So a couple of years ago, we got funding for 10 additional shelters. Those have gone in, and are, they were finished in February, so we're, those are operational. We're now in the process of using some funding to take what we call the spare parts as, as shelters may got hit by a car or something, we can't salvage all of it, we have a stash of spare parts, so we're using those to reconstruct and put shelters out there. Last year's budget, in part of last year's budget, we included some, a study for a shade study into what we call microshelters, so we don't have, we don't have right-of-way throughout the city for a full-size shelter, nor do all stops require that. So we're working with an engineering firm to come up with some design options for those, to provide shade at those places where we're challenged right-of-way, so this would be the next kind of phase in that. So with all of that, it's 23, it's probably around another 40 to 45 shelters with this addition that we will have put in, added to our inventory. So we're very appreciative of that.
And that was after you kind of went through a whole ranking, I remember.
Yeah, we, we've identified our stops to see where the, where the most potential, where the best option would be. We have stops that, I use this one as an example, that they don't necessarily need a shelter because they have shade from a building, and that's at the Dollar General on Country Club and 8th. We moved a shelter, and so the building provides shade and the landscaping provides some cooling factor for that stop. So those areas, we have some shelters, some stops that will benefit from that.
Anyway, so the council, I think that was a direction from council a couple of years ago, right? And so I think we're trying to get those up as fast as we can, so.
Yeah, I think that situation's been dramatically improved. I mean, I think we all were very compelled to address this when you drive by and see people standing out in the heat of the day and with no shelter, so that, my impression And with no shelter, so that, my impression is that, that we've made a lot of progress there.
I know Kevin.
Oh, sorry.
But let me go first, Kevin, please. So how many shelters do we actually need covers for?
Quite a bit. We have about.
Like 400 or something?
It's about 500, about 500 more probably.
So we're chipping away at it?
We're chipping away little by little.
But on a priority list?
On a priority list, yeah.
Okay.
Some of them we just don't have the space, the right of way, we'd have to go.
Some of them we have to buy right of way and sometimes.
Negotiate for the right of way.
Sometimes a property owner isn't, doesn't want a shelter there. They're fine with the bus stops, so that's why we're looking at some of these, what we, what. We're internally calling micro shelters, which might be just, you know, the way I describe it is like if you're familiar with some of the intersection downtown Phoenix or 24th and Camelback, they have. The pole with the big leaf to provide some shade, something like that to provide some shade cover during the heat where we can fit within some of that right of way.
Okay, well, as long as we chip away. I want to extend my appreciation because some of these stops, they need, we needed to change the benches in there because we had some people sleeping long-term on benching. And so you were able to put some of these special benches in to not allow that to happen. So I know one of the property owners reached out to me and said, thank you very much for that.
No problem.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was going to be my, my ask, is that, that when you're designing these or the, the design firms that's designing these can. Get input from our public safety folks, you know, especially PD. Because I know I've gone out on ride-alongs and literally seen. Our citizens standing in the elements because there was a homeless person sleeping on the bench.
Right.
And so any way that we could make it easier for PD to see what's going on inside the bus shelter, because some of them have like a screen on the front, so you can't really see behind. What's going on. And so if there's a way that we can make sure that it's open enough access that. That it's still secure enough that it keeps people out of the elements, but at the same time, open enough to where our, our police, when they're out on patrol, they can see what's going on.
Right. Whenever we do a new shelter design, it does go through a SEP Ted review. So we've always done that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Reddy.
Jody, I know I asked you this question, but there's a, there's a lot of slabs of concrete out there where there's stops. Is there noting that we don't have the resources to provide shelter to every of those slabs of concrete? Is there other ways? You know, folks that can, like a lean bar or something that is not as resource-heavy that can help alleviate maybe. Folks carrying bags, grocery bags or, you know, just to lean on something or, is there other ways that we can supply? Some kind of resource for folks that are waiting on those slabs of concrete where there's nothing?
Yeah.
And we're not planning for anything in the future as far as shade structure, maybe something that they can be helpful as they stand around for the bus?
Right. We've just started recently looking at incorporating some lean bars where they make sense, so we can look at those in, at the stops as well.
I have one more ask. In the shelters, I was just thinking as Councilmember Heredia was speaking. Is there any way we could paint or have some type of reflective paint in our right of way or the shelter that reflect the heat so it's not absorbing the heat? Does there any look into that to where we can not absorb heat at the shelters as much? You know, we have the ambient heat.
Right.
I'm just wondering, is there anything out there?
We haven't looked at that, but we can, we can look at that and maybe work with RJ's group on what might.
What could reflect the heat and not absorb it, but yet, you know, have the shelter in place?
Right.
And not be, if it's five degrees cooler, I mean, that's five degrees cooler.
Right.
Versus hot concrete.
Some of that comes with materials, so like the, what we call our BRT stations, which are some of the more, some of the ones. At the major intersections like on Main Street and Country Club, the material that it's made out of is designed to make those shelters. Five to 10 degrees cooler in the summertime from the asphalt, because they're right there on the street getting the, the heat from the, from the asphalt.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So when you look at the impacts of these adjustments onto our budget. We have an opportunity in this year's budget, Route 30, which is on University. It currently is being funded out of our general fund. This will transition to being funded out of our PTF, our Proposition 400 funding allocation. So that will save us just under $2 million a year in this year's dollars. In addition, we are going to transition to try to fund our ride choice program. Out of, out of Proposition 400 funds as well, rather than the general fund. So together that, those two will save us about 3.2 million dollars a year. Moving forward. So when we look at the enhancements, we stretched this out over several fiscal years because they will impact fiscal years. In fiscal year 2223, where the total of our enhancements that we're looking at is 1.5 million dollars for a general fund savings of about 1.7 million dollars. And then that stretches out into, to future years.
Jody, I have a question.
Huh?
So on the Fiesta Buzz and then we have the Downtown Buzz, I assume that that's a free service?
Yes.
Is that correct? And so the adjustment on the budget from 675 to 1.1.
That, that's because.
Picking up the Fiesta Buzz.
No, what that is, I should have explained that. Thank you for that question. The Fiesta Buzz won't start until October.
Okay.
So that 600,000 represents service from November. It will start with the Valley Metro Service Change on October, I think it's 25th. So that's basically eight months of service for one year and then fiscal year 2223 reflects, or 2324 reflects a full year of service moving forward.
So the first, the first column is a partial year of funding that is fully funded, and I'm assuming then you put some kind of inflation?
Yes.
In there after that.
Are we retaining the Downtown Buzz?
Yes.
Okay, so it's.
Yes, this will be a whole new service.
We're not taking anything away from anything else.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So as we look at our expenditure and revenue summary, I have to put this with a caveat, is that. Fiscal years 20, 20 to 22, 20, 21 to 21, 22 include a significant amount of stimulus money that was given to transit. In all three stimulus packages, transit had its own allocation separate from what went to the cities. So Mesa received roughly $47 million in stimulus money. 30 million of that directly offset services that were funded by the general fund. So that's why these numbers look kind of low. They're going to continue to go up, so I want to set a reasonable expectation. So next year when I'm here.
The question is, did Brian and Chris put that in the forecast?
Yes.
Yes, they did. Okay, good. So we're living off of these one-time dollars that it came and offset a lot of our expenses to make up for. In, you know, just nobody riding on rail and trying to keep it going, right? But the general fund had picked up a lot of that cost, so that was really a savings to the. General fund, has been, continues for a little while, but it's going to, I guess we're going to wean ourselves off of that or it's going to phase, phase out over a period of time.
Correct, yeah. So we've used all the stimulus money for our fixed route bus and our paratransit service, but we still have about 6 million, six, it's between 6 and 7 million dollars. Left to apply to light rail. So that's why light rail is at 10 million. Without that, it would be closer to 17 million dollars for light rail operations. And then starting in fiscal year 2324, we will have no more stimulus money to apply. And then just to give you an idea, we always show this so you can see the true value of our contracted services, our transit services that we, we provide the city. When we, with Prop 400 money, you can tell, see, Prop 400 is very important to our fixed route operations. It, it funds the vast majority of that. And it will fund the majority of our paratransit and ride choice programs moving forward. And then we still have some ARPA money, so we're providing about 45 million dollars worth of transit service to the residents this fiscal year.
And the mayor, I think, has been very much into these conversations and I think council's heard this, but. One of the first priorities when we worked with the region to continue with Prop 400 extended was to first of all, take care of the. Existing commitments and routes of bus and light rail that we already have built into, that's already built in. You can see that's a big number, right? And that before we talked about adding anything, so, but, so the good news is that's all built in. So the next, the Prop 400 extension, whatever, it would include, continue these, right?
It would continue bus and paratransit.
Yeah.
Services, yes. And then with that, any additional questions that anybody has?
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, because I've asked every year for eight years. When are we going to get more bus routes into East Mesa?
Well, part of that will come with our Transit Master Plan because in East Mesa, in some areas specifically. Like I said, a 40-foot bus isn't probably the most productive or best option for residents, so that will be very helpful in looking at, you know, circulators or microtransit so that then we can. Start to put together a plan for how to add that.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Luna.
Of course, Jody, just like my colleague. Same issue in Northeast Mesa.
Right. And we would look at that, when we did the Transit Master Plan 10 years ago, I had several conversations with residents who. Were very adamant they didn't want a 40-foot bus in their neighborhood and I don't blame them. So this is why, moving forward when we do this, getting the public involvement. Public input is going to be very important.
Jody, on that end, sorry, I know there is some competitive grants going for micro transit. Are we looking at those? Options for maybe the East Mesa portions that we can apply to for studies to, to look into?
We haven't, but we can look into that, to look at that.
All right, thank you.
I have one question and I should know the answer, but Prop 400, is the new version of it going to be on this year's ballot?
Mr. Butler is anxious to come up and he's going to give you a.
This year's election, I said budget, this year's election.
Ironclad promise.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, to be determined. Right now, the legislation has passed the State Senate. And now it's awaiting action in the, in the State House. We believe that it's in good shape, but the legislative process is always a tricky one and. It's not over till it's over, so we're, we do hope that it will. We do believe the legislation will pass this session. The question becomes, it has to have an emergency clause, which is a legislative term of art, meaning a super majority in order to. To appear on the budget this fall. It left the Senate with that emergency clause intact. Now though, the question is not really whether it will pass the House, but whether it will pass the House with enough votes to maintain. That emergency clause. If not, that just means that people will have to make a decision moving forward of, do you call a special election sometime in 2023? And have a county-wide election off-cycle or do you wait until the 2024 cycle and put it before the voters in, in that year?
And the proposition, the funding expires in '25, is that correct?
At, at, Mayor and Vice Mayor, at the end of 2025, December 31st of 2025 is the expiration of Prop 400.
Okay, so we'd hate to wait till '24, the, the last hour pretty much.
That.
To make that decision.
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor, that, that's the reason why Mayor Giles and others who were involved in this really wanted to get it to the ballot this year. And we've, we've had tremendous support. Senator Tyler Pace of Mesa has been the author of the legislation, has been a great champion for getting it to the ballot. This fall, we're hopeful that it will. We, we feel good regardless of getting it passed, but we're really hopeful that it can be in a situation where the voters could decide this fall.
When's the deadline for it being passed to get on the ballot?
As long as it passes with the emergency clause this, this session, Maricopa County and the Maricopa County Recorder's Office. Has signed off on the ability that they will be able to add it to the November ballot as long as it is passed this legislative session and signed by the governor with, with that super majority. Emergency clause provision.
Yeah, sooner is better than later because even though Prop 400 doesn't expire till the end of '25, if we have voter approval, we can start using that to bond and, and so a lot of these projects that are ready to go. Right, will start years ahead of, you know, waiting till the expiration of '25, so it's, it's to our advantage to do it now.
Mayor, to that point, we're really hoping, for example, that State Route 24 would be something that we would be able to move and try to accelerate the. Next phase of, of that, even though the facility will open as an interim facility later this year. If, if Prop 400 extension is passed by the voters and Maricopa County and MAG are able to bond against future revenue. Then that's one project that we know there's great need in the Southeast Valley and in Councilmember Thompson's district to. Make sure that we get that facility fully upgraded. And that's just one example of some of the projects that we could accelerate.
One more question on that. So it's so necessary for us to grow, we're growing so fast, we have to have that transportation and transit options. But annually, how much does that mean to the Maricopa County? How, how much revenue does it bring?
How much do you collect?
Annually or some kind of, you know, I just to give some kind of, do you have any idea how enormous it is? I know it's very important and.
Yeah.
All the cities depend on it.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, we, we can get you that number. There's been, you know, a very thorough economic analysis done about this, about the, the economic impact and for every dollar. That's spent on infrastructure, what that ripple effect is. And that's why we've been very fortunate to have the business communities unwavering support on, on this. They understand the importance. I mean, every day, including today, we have another press release of another job locator, another business that's developing in Mesa and that proximity to freeways and infrastructure. Can't be underestimated. So we'll get that number for you. It's, it's a dramatic number.
Do we have an idea how many, what the figure is for Mesa?
Well.
I know, I should.
Yeah. Mayor, Vice Mayor, well, yeah.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Collect it, plug it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I want to say it's, you know, 30-something billion over the 25 years, so it's, it's an enormous amount of money annually to Mesa.
And Mayor, I would just say that 30 billion is actually how much revenue between federal funds and local, regional funds that Prop 400 extension would generate. But that, that economic impact far exceeds that 30 billion dollar.
The leverage it has, every dollar of that MAG sales tax, tax leverages so much on the federal side to meet our match. That's, I mean, it's all valuable, but then it just, it just exponentially, right, takes that one dollar. Now we can draw down dollars. From the federal government that we wouldn't otherwise have the resources to do. So there's some big value in that.
If this, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman, go ahead.
Scott, when do you expect the session to end? So we can get through all this drama.
Oh boy, this is where it gets really good.
I wanted to see how good you were.
Councilmember, you would really make a lot of people happy if you could, you know, place bets on, on a prediction there, but.
You're doing a good job. Now answer my question.
We, we always hope that the legislature will adjourn promptly, but we're.
Okay, you're done.
We, and it's a conversation we just had this afternoon and there's a lot to be done still. There's, there's so much out there that they're working on.
You know, when you talk to folks about Prop 400, it's good to remind them that the MAG and the cities, City of Mesa, we all really came in and did a lot of compromising. Because the political forces said we won't support a tax increase. And so this is, Prop 400 extension is not a tax increase. It's, it's extending the half-cent sales tax that's been in place for the last 20 years. So when we message this out, we need to help every, all the conservative folks who are. Experiencing, you know, a lot of inflation shock right now and are saying, what do you mean, you want me to vote for a tax increase? No, we don't. We just want you to. Keep in place the half-cent sales tax that is paid for everything over the last 20 years, that, that all of our jobs are somehow related, linked to over the last 20 years. So that's going to be a, a big, interesting campaign and we'll see when it's going to happen, but. Appreciate everyone who's, Senator Pace's name was mentioned, he was the chairman of the Senate Transportation Committee, he sponsored the bill. He really, he did a lot more than that. He was, he was a missionary and went out and defended it and fought for it and we all owe him. If, next time you see Senator Pace, please thank him on behalf of the people of Mesa, Arizona.
Thank you. Anything else, Jody?
Nope, that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Next item on our, on our agenda, item three is current events and conferences attended. Counsel, I know you've been busy. Who would like to begin? Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Mesa PD, Aaron Spicer, the Commander of Precision. They did a great job this weekend. We had a lot of traffic in. Northeast Mesa and I want to thank both off and on-duty police officers for maintaining that we had safe, safe streets. So. Thank you, Commander Spicer, and please extend my thanks to your officers that worked there. Also, we had the MAC reception. We have the diversity award recognition given to the Dia de los Muertos Committee and it was a nice celebration. Mayor, you were there. And Council General Jorge Mendoza Yescas was there to join. And Council General Jorge Mendoza Yescas was there to join us as well. And we, at Red Mountain High School, we had the Run Three, Run Third Run, and it was a lot of fun. We had 800 participants and had a good time, so.
Thank you. I saw you running as I drove by from El Torre de Mesa. That was a hectic part of town on Saturday. Who else would like to share what you've been up to? Vice Mayor?
I'll chime in. At the same time that that was going on in downtown Mesa, we had the Cycle of Mesa put on by the Transportation Department and Bike and Pedestrian Safety, and they did a great job and lots of good, fun things for the kids to do. And it was a really fun event, and it kicks off the Valley Bike Month. Backing up to earlier in the week, I attended a rerun Mesa class at Eagles, which is always fun. And later that evening, I attended a Washington Escobedo Community Meeting. And thank you to the Park Rangers and the officers and Neighborhood Services for attending that meeting at Washington Escobedo. Also, on Friday, if you've driven down Main Street, you might have noticed some cool banners of Troy Kotzer congratulating him on his Oscar for Best Supporting Actor and Best Picture for Coda. So he's a Mesa native, and so we're proud of, and, and look for it next time you're in downtown Mesa. Also, on Saturday, I attended a Spectrum IPA beer release, and at 12 West, partnered with Visit Mesa to, and the mayor was also there, and had a proclamation for World Autism Day. So the Spectrum is fundraising and celebrating our autism awareness. We're autism-friendly city, the first certified city. And also, there was a Armani Williams, the first professional NASCAR driver with autism was there to help us kick off the day. So a great celebration at 12 West, and you can find the beer not only at 12 West, but at Chupacabra, a taproom in downtown Mesa, as well as wherever 12 West distributes the beer. And by the way, the beer is good. I took, I did have a taste as my civic duty to do. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? I'll add my thanks to the, the activities that were just mentioned. Also, over the weekend, I was able to drop by a couple of places that are involved in raising funds for the Ukraine. And that, the Al Perogi Kitchen over on West Baseline in Mr. Horeddy's district is a Ukrainian restaurant, and they are very active in raising funds. It's also a very good restaurant. I hadn't had Ukrainian food before, so if you feel compelled to do something to help those who are suffering in the Ukraine, it's, it can be a very pleasant experience. Go, go to this wonderful restaurant, and 20% of their proceeds are going to the Ukraine, and you can also make other donations. Similarly, proof bread that we all love and enjoy, they're making donations when you buy a loaf of proof bread in downtown Mesa as well. So encourage you to both, to take, to find ways to be supportive of those in Ukraine and support these great local businesses.
What's the name of the restaurant again?
Al Perogi.
Al Perogi.
Yes, that, that's a traditional Ukrainian dish, which is quite good, by the way, the potato pancake that was, get, get the perogi while you're there. It's a good, it's on baseline, it's kind of the Dobson Ranch area.
Almost on baseline.
Yes, thank you. Almost on baseline, you'll like it. Anything else you'd like to share with us, Counsel? Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Just a reminder, we'll meet on Thursday for a study session. We'll have, the Police Department budget will be presented then, and then we'll follow by a Sustainability and Transportation Committee meeting. And Mayor and Counsel, we're going to start adding to our update, kind of a maybe monthly total of, there's this question about number of units being built in Mesa, and, you know, keeping up with units. So I can tell you, between single-family residential units and new family, new multifamily units in 2019, the number we issued was 3,300. Last year in 2021, it was 4,572. We're on pace to do another 4,000 this year. So we're doing pretty robust numbers. We consider in the last three years, we've done over 13,000, almost 14,000 new units in Mesa, Arizona.
And do we have a number approximately? I know I don't want to get into another meeting, but how many units we'd say that we are short on housing for the city of Mesa?
I don't know how to figure that out.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, here's how many, we do know how many we are approving. My point is, it's, hasn't slowed down, we haven't hold it, held back, it's as many as we've ever done.
Well, and to that point, and we have a, a large housing complex that we're going to be, we'll see, but it's on our agenda tonight, so we might be adding to those numbers at the end of our meeting tonight. All right, that concludes the agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene in about 10 minutes upstairs.